Mr. Chair, the waiting room is empty. Have a quorum present clear to proceed.
Thank you Mitch. Welcome, welcome, welcome. The planning board will come to order February 2nd, 2023. Groundhog Day. So we've done this before. Let's start out with public comment and I'd like to make it on any topic other than the ADU rental term because I'm, I would like to allow public comment during during that agenda item. So what do we have? Laura has a hand up.
Okay, Laura, your muted name and address for the record, please.
Laura Halliwell, 37 High Street. I first of all, wanted to again, thank you for all the hard work that went into the preparation for the town meeting. And I have a couple of suggestions that might make the next section of this a little easier. Many of us tried to understand the articles before we came, but were not successful. And I hope that you would consider having a couple of workshops where you would choose the articles that you're actually hoping to get done the next time. You might not be able to hold on and be able to chat with people to explain why you're doing what you're doing and help them to reduce their confusion. Not in a very formal setting, not a planning board meeting, but just a conversation so that some of the people's concerns could be answered. I, I do think that when I looked at what's remaining, that is a pretty ambitious amount. I had one question. I had sent the chair some very specific questions and I don't know that it's not the really the most important one, but I did notice a kind of strange thing, which was in the watershed protection, the definition of hazardous material did say includes without limitation, any synthetic organic chemical. And I just want to point out that my lease is a synthetic organic chemical and I don't know where that language came from. So maybe I just didn't understand the context. So anyhow, persevere. We think the changes are important to the town and complicated. Thank you.
Well, thanks for your comments, Laura. I believe Jason has a plan for more than a hearing. I don't know if they're called workshops, but we'll pass that along and see what we can do to make this a better process. Toby has a hand up. Virtually.
Toby, you're unmuted. Name and address for the record.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I think Laura Halliwell's idea of you know, workshops is a good one. I would assume that it would be planning board meetings though. If it's to amount to anything, it would need to be. I have other concerns. As you're probably well aware and Mitch is on and can confirm this, all of the articles that weren't dealt with, starting with J and going through R, so roughly half of them slide forward to the annual town meeting where they're going to be on the warrant. That's unavoidable. Unless you or the Board of Selectmen can be persuaded to do the town meeting in two slots, that is two successive Saturdays. We're in for an unspeakable ordeal. The annual town meeting a year ago, 2021 lasted from nine in the morning till after four in the afternoon. And that was without a great overload of planning board articles. It was without a stormwater bylaw article. It was without, as far as I can recall, any petition articles. So there are going to be a number of petition articles. I hesitate to speak of mine because I've not got help from town council and you know, may not be able to get them in, but there are at least two others going forward. So.
Toby, just to, just to clarify, you haven't gotten it yet. You were told that it's coming back from council. So you, you are getting it. You were told it just wasn't back yet. They're due back tonight or tomorrow morning.
Uh, thank you. That will be really helpful and give me some time to get signatures. But my concern for the voters, you saw at the last town meeting how confusing and disagreeable it had become after only three hours. And if you contemplate adding all of your articles onto what might be five or seven hours, it becomes, you know, an impossible ordeal. So I would ask you as a board at some point to take a vote and ask the Board of Selectmen if the articles are to go on yours at the annual town meeting to go forward. They have to be on the warrant. That you ask the Board of Selectmen to slot or schedule two successive Saturdays. Then it becomes manageable and I'd hope for a response on that.
I think we need the full board here to discuss that. You know, Jason's been the prime mover and setting up the town meeting logistics. So I think that would be a good agenda item for next meeting, if that's okay, Toby?
Again, yes, I had one other concern at the meeting that Jason had with the Board of Selectmen. He referred to a letter that was sent to the state housing authority. I'm not sure what, which tentacle of the bureaucracy it is or what its formal name is, saying how we were going to produce the additional housing units which they see fit to demand. I want a copy of that letter. And of course we'll pay for it if necessary. And I also want a copy of whatever letter the state sent out requiring that response. And your secretary Mary, whom I like and admire, is very protective of your board and loves to give out things if she isn't sure that, you know, they should be in the public domain. And both of those would definitely be in the public domain because they were referred to at meetings, which with Zoom is the equivalent of putting them on the table. And would you please tell her that I want those things and to give me copies of them?
I believe those should be public records and I don't see a reason why Mary shouldn't give you a copy. I heard that at least our plan was posted on the planning board webpage. Not that that helps you very much, but I haven't checked personally to see that it's there.
Could you please speak with her and tell her I'll be asking for those things?
Okay.
Thank you.
Diane has a hand up.
Diane, you're unmuted. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Diane Vella, 17 King Street in Rockport. And I'm also representing Laura Fillmore Evans at 77 High Street. We both, she couldn't be here tonight, but we're both wrote this that we are advocates for the town stipulating that ADUs have 12 instead of six month leases.
Diane, could you hold this until we're on that agenda topic? You may not have been here when I said that.
I knew it was on the agenda. So.
Yeah, I, at the beginning, probably before you joined, I said we could have comments during the agenda item. Rather than in the beginning, I think that'd be more productive if you're okay.
No problem. No problem. Thank you.
Do you have comments on anything else besides that agenda item?
That's it. Thank you.
Seeing no more hands. Just thinking about Toby's comments about articles J through R and I'm wondering who killed JR. We'll find out. Okay, approving minutes. First of all, November 3rd, Jason has informed me that he has some significant input on that. And since he's not present, I think it's best to defer approval of the November 3rd meetings minutes. Hope that doesn't put anybody out. Save your comments for next time. We hope Jason will be with us. So let's move to November 17. When I was not here, so it's up to you guys. Do you have any comments on this? If you do, I can screen share and do the revisions.
You weren't here. So the one thing I couldn't remember was there's nothing mentioned under Yankee Clipper. Item two. And I think there was some question of whether or not we were considering them together or apart. And then it was withdrawn, I believe. Because I don't know what my comment is other than I kind of quite don't quite understand it.
Yeah, I wasn't there. Anybody else have a recollection to make this correct?
Well, there clearly was discussion about whether they should be considered separately or individually. I don't think that that matter was actually determined, but the leaning was towards considering them together. That may not be very helpful, but that's my recollection of it.
Any other input on that one?
Well, I guess we can leave it.
It's unfair. Right.
Believe it.
Yeah.
We have more decision. We get more decision. Anything else on? Minutes from 117.
Is it for me?
If there's no other input, entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Peter moved and Harry seconds. Roll call vote, Peter.
Hi.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Tom is not voting because he was not there. So approved. Three to zero. Sorry. Okay, moving on to December 1st, where I was here. Any comments on that? I have one. Take yours first, if you like.
I did want to comment that these are getting better and better as we've gone through them. Since the first one 16 minutes ago, so I don't know who is doing this now, but I think we should thank them.
Okay, compliments to the chef. I have one comment here that says city green, that should be town green. What they meant.
Did you do the walk?
Yes. You mean the field trip to Good Harbor Beach?
The field trip to Good Harbor?
Yeah, they have video of me walking in the parking lot with the water up to the top of my 11 inch boots. So I'm famous for being a drama queen walking in water here. And spelling August wrong. Let's fix that. Anything else? This is too easy, too easy. If there are no other revisions, so entertain a motion to accept as mildly amended here.
I'll make that motion.
Harry moves and.
Second.
Peter seconds. Roll call. Peter.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Tom, I approved. Thank you. That was easy. Now we have the main course, ADU rental term. I asked to put this on the agenda because I have been hearing from our constituents that the six month max minimum rental is not sufficient for excluding seasonal rentals. And if the goal is to create year round housing for people, it's gotta be like a year for the minimum. And I'm sympathetic with that. You may recall that was my opinion when we we voted to make it six months. I was in the minority on that one. So I'd like to revisit this if we have any further thoughts about it. And if we want to put an article for some future meeting and even if we don't, I suspect there's going to be a citizen petition. And if there is, what is our opinion about it? Comments?
I think the fact that it came up at the last, at the actual town meeting or the special town meeting is as good as any place for input that can be changed. And also if, if we're going to do what Toby suggested either postpone a spec to a special meeting or a second half of a meeting or something. I think we're going to be required for another public hearing anyway, or which, which could take the form of the workshop type thing. And I, I think it's a natural part of that, which means, which means we can, I think, easily change these warrants. We didn't vote on them. They'll essentially be new when they come up again. Um, so I think it's fair game to just, if we think it's a good idea to change it. If you're architect talking, not a lawyer.
That's why you're here. That's why Jason's not here.
Not the only reason.
Comments? Harry, Bob?
I don't know too much about the history of this, but I've been contemplating it over the last couple of weeks. And I, I think it would be helpful just in terms of our, our goals of trying to encourage more year round population to support the schools and everything else here, all the businesses that it would be a welcome addition, I think. Even if it was six months and a day and people could say that that was their primary residence, it would help, but but I think the the one year thing makes it pretty solid and it's, it's more rectified with the, the common lease period that people tend to have anyway, or year round residences. So I can't think of a big downside, really. I think it could only help our case as well with the MBTA overlay district things that we're thinking about right now. And there might even, there might even be a, an additional thing that we could think about in terms of that, which is I'm try, I've been trying to contact the, the state to find out what their minimum dwelling unit square footage is. And I don't know if anybody here knows that, but because they made some comments about the accessory dwelling units, not, not counting for multifamily housing. Because technically you can have an ADU that's as small as 250 square feet, which would be, you know, smaller than a, a typical micro unit even, or, or a studio apartment. So I can understand a little bit why they're they would be temperamental on that. But I just want to know what the number is. A lot of the harbor light community partners, Mitch Bureau, that we, we saw in some previous changes had apartments down to 650 square foot as examples of housing choice. And I think I just want to know what the, what is the number? What is the smallest number they would accept? And it'd be interesting to see that in terms of maybe potential tax breaks for people that offer, you know, above that minimum number or something, some carat that would, that would allow some of these units to be more like solid one bedroom or studio units that could be occupied pretty easily. And gain some year round residency. Those are my two or three cents there.
That's a good question about what the state minimum might be. In terms of the multifamily, right, a tiny, a tiny house is not going to be multifamily. But the lot that it's on by adding an ADU will put multiple families on a lot. So.
Right, right.
But it won't be 16 or 15 units per acre necessarily.
Yeah, necessarily. But yeah, it would get, get a little closer to, to being a kosher unit if you.
And I thought the hearsay was that even 900 was too small.
Oh, I, I think I may have had that. That's gotta be wrong because I mean, that's, that's a two bedroom apartment size with two bedroom, two bath, really. So I can't see why they would object to that when a lot of their, their own developments are that size. So I think it's because you can go down to 250 square feet and still call it a dwelling unit. That's the problem. And somewhere in the middle of those two numbers lies, lies their, their minimum, I think. So we'll find that out probably in the next week and work on that. But anyway, the 12 month thing to me sounds like a move in their, in the right direction, I think.
Any thoughts, Harry?
I'm, I'm going to take the opposing view.
Surprise.
My, my opposing view is based on the business community. Rockport is clearly a, a seasonal hospitality based community. And so while I don't know this to be true, are there a number of staffers or seasonal employees that come into Rockport that depend on some housing that they would automatically be shut out from if we had a 12 month limit on short, short term rentals? So I'm, 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 you know, basically presenting my view from the perspective of unintended consequences.
So you're basically adding an extra reason to have ADUs. Originally it was for permanent housing and you're saying it also serves for seasonal workers?
I, I don't think we would want to exclude that. But I, again, I don't know if, if that matters here. I'm just, I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of particularly the restaurants in town to the extent that they use seasonal staffing. I, I know that I've, I've talked to people who, who go south in the winter and come north in the summer and their waitstaff and they've got to live somewhere. So I'm just.
Yeah, that, I mean, I think that's a, that's an interesting point too. I, I agree. I, it would be interesting to, to get some comment on or some data on that to see how, how true that, that is.
I don't have any. So.
I don't really, I don't really know either. I know most of the, most of the restaurants are, they do go wanting in the summer or they have in the last few years because when people head out to to summer things, they're, or going back to school and stuff, they're, they're gone, gone. And suffer in the fall and spring seasons too. So.
The other business conflict we talked about, the first time we talked about this was not just the summer people and thinking of a three months or six months. Or, you know, pairing up a nine month winter with a three month summer was that some people might be using ADUs like Airbnbs for a weekend or a week. And then all of a sudden they're in competition with ins who've complied with all sorts of other legislations to be, to be an in.
We should note that the zoning provisions will apply to future ADU created creations. Existing ADUs would still be able to comply do without this minimum. So depending on the size of your see, transient worker market, there might be enough existing ADUs to handle that. I don't know. We, we got no.
I think there's enough, enough unintended consequences potential out there that, that this doesn't need to be permanent. I think we can try it. And, you know, if other heads prevail later, that's okay. But we need to, we need to get them approved and in. And a consensus, I think was awesome, but the community that I've talked to seems to be the 12 months.
All right, let's get some public comment. Diane has been in line.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Diane Vella, 17 King Street. And there's a group of citizens that are meeting on affordable housing and we all support the 12 month, believing that a seasonal, that we'd get more seasonal people, especially people who are willing to pay. They'd pay six months and stay here for, stay here just for the summer. We also think that perhaps the 12 month leases would address the objections of our district people who raised during the special town meeting when the town people voted down the, the zoning changes. I know this is going to come up again, but this may help with their fear of people taking down houses and, and building some kinds of things. And Peter, to your that the smallest unit that's being, Harbor Light is building over there at Granite Crossing is 300 and look in the fine print, 355 square feet. That's the smallest unit that they are building. I don't know if that hasn't, you know, if that's helpful or not.
That, and that's like the modern micro unit that they're doing a lot of.
They considered a studio.
Essentially a 20 by 20 space, if not smaller.
Right.
I've, I've designed some of these in the city and that were that size, but the developer insisted that we make them true one bedrooms. And we even pulled that off, if you can imagine. But so it's, it's doable. That it lends itself more to a micro unit or a studio. A studio, a small studio.
Well, it's an increase. I think we would support an increased minimum size in order for people to live there 12 months. I think that that's that could be a possibility, but we're, the whole group of us are really strongly supporting the, the 12 months and support having a warrant to that effect. So, thank you.
Next is Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Diane Vella ended by mentioning the warrant. The warrant closes this coming Thursday. That's the ninth. At what hour? I'm not sure. You being privileged characters and public officials might conceivably get things onto the warrant with permission from their majesties, the selectmen later. But ordinary folk will not. Mentioned about, you know, procedures and the possibility of tax write offs for any such ventures. That's not within your purview. It probably is not within the purview of the town meeting either. That's the state that decides on, you know, tax write offs of one sort or another. So that would probably be like the alcohol Mitch could fill you in if he's listening. You would have to get a town meeting vote and then the state would have to sign off on it. All of this discussion about whether the, the units, the size of the, the chicken coop apartments, the ADUs would meet the state's criteria gives away the show. All of this is intended to indulge or, or pander to or appease the state. And when we hear about housing for seasonal workers, the unfortunate seasonal workers almost certainly get minimum wage, which is now $15 an hour and start multiplying. I'm not good at math. 15 times 40 times 50 gives you an income of $30,000 a year. But anyone who invests the money, and in every case, we're talking about private property. Anyone who invests the money to build the chicken coop apartments will do so not out of philanthropy, but out of a desire to make money. So the odds of, of there being rented at a price that minimum wage workers, the seasonal workers that the restaurants might want can afford are like the odds of winning a lottery.
And yet people do play the lottery.
They do. They do. And fools win, but not, not more than very few.
Got me out. Any other comments, Toby? I think you're off, off the mic now. Eric is next.
Yeah, Eric Hutchins, 45 Pools Lane. I attended your hearing last year when you discussed the six month or a few months on the number of months. And then I want to tie together what Laura Halliwell brought up as well as Toby. I think they all chime into this, which is, I think it would be valuable to put together a pro and con. You've, you've verbally identified some in the spring and then a couple of new ones almost came up tonight. It'd be valuable to write them down and actually have them. And actually have them available for a public information meeting. Um, because it is bound to come to town meeting by the sounds of what we're hearing on the street. And it needs to, I I think even the planning board ought to be digging in a little bit more and debating. With those pros and cons, go down the lists and and analyze it a little bit more. May not find data, but you might be able to dig in a little bit more after some debate. Um, and it may influence you. I'm not even saying which way. I definitely, I think I chimed in earlier about the six month myself. But I'm not adamant about it. I think we as a community ought to study it a little bit more before. Pushing for one side or the other, but I think you need to put the pros and cons down and and think about them a little bit further. Rather than just a casual conversation. Uh, I think it would be valuable for the public, also very much so. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, let's have a wrap up among the members here. Do we have a consensus about how we feel about it now? Here.
I was, we talked about seasonal workers in addition to the idea that long term people who live here. Would be able to afford it, who are in the service industry or whatever. But I look back to some of the original conversations, which really grew out of in law apartments. I know my next door neighbor here has tried and failed prior to this law to get an A pre standing ADU for her son. On the property. And so I think that just the older people who can afford to keep up a bigger house. And the younger people who can't afford to live here after they leave home. Is already a pretty good sized market for these houses and and one where we hopefully would satisfy. So I I tend to agree with the the twelve month to bias the whole population to those groups.
Change your mind yet, Bob?
Um, no, I still I still think the twelve month is is worth putting putting to a vote. Because. I I sort of feel that there's like like we were like, I think Peter was saying. There's there's already a lot of pre pre existing seasonal spots there. And if this becomes a real a real problem, we'll find out. I think we don't. We don't know what the tide of change is. At this early stage, since the ADU has just passed. And we can always pull back on that if if people feel it's a real problem. And I think the lowest price per square foot is probably that people will will get is is the twelve, the twelve month thing. But it's a solid, it's a solid long lease and it allows it allows this community to become a little less transient. Which I think could be useful.
Come complain we hear about the transient population. Final thoughts, Harry?
Well, over here in Pigeon Cove, I've got two neighbors. One that I know, one I don't. That have. The one I know has rented out their home in the past for. Weekly. Tenants. The party that I don't know, several doors up from me, they they acquired the property. They invested considerable amount of money and it's beautiful. And it's being used pretty much as an Airbnb property. I just don't know that going from six months to twelve months is going to result. In. The the goal that we're all hoping for. So I'm, I I I don't see the benefit, quite frankly, in going from six months to twelve months.
Okay, so we're basically three to one in terms of six versus twelve versus six. Um, in terms of what we can do. I asked Jason about trying to get this on the warrant upcoming meeting and he said we would need to have a hearing and we don't have time. To have a hearing and still allow for changes to the article and still meet the closing of the warrant. So I I understood from Jason that it's off the table for us to have this article at the Angleton meeting.
So it could be a friendly movement in the floor.
Well, I said, well, it would have to be an amendment to an existing article to be a floor motion, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Uh, so if there's a citizen petition, that's a different story.
Right.
So I'm thinking we have kind of a split. Uh, opinion here about whether to support any citizen petition, at least personally. But just speaking for myself, I I think if. Someone puts that on the on the warrant and makes a case at town meeting, I would favor that. Eric, I think we maybe can let you in for a final thought here.
Um, I I might be wrong, but I believe the planning board can modify its own article for town meeting. It doesn't have to come from outside entity. It could come from the planning board. Doesn't have to be in the warrant. The way I mean, you need to have an article to amend. But I'm quite sure when I was on the planning board, we modified things after the warrant closed. Because we still actually got new information that allowed that we modified it. But I maybe I'm wrong, but that's my memory. Thank you.
You can offer, Mr. Chair, you could you could offer a motion to amend on the floor. But once the warrant's done, the warrant's done. You'd have to do it that way. Um, and as of right now, all of the those other articles are just going to, you know, they're they're rolling forward as is. But for this, somebody would have to make a motion on the floor. We'd have to have a pre planned amendment as part of the motion package.
Well, this would amend the ADU article passed last May. This is not.
It's already passed.
Then that would need to be a standalone article. That needs to be a standalone article.
Requires public hearing.
Is the is the the verbiage somewhere in this J through R somewhere here anyway? That's what I was looking to see.
So the J through R is explicit that unless it's strike through or bold. It can't impact. So if it isn't J through R, it would have to be something that's stricken or bold. It's it's.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Particularly narrowly constrained.
This should become S.
Let's see.
I think since it's amending what we passed last May, I doubt that there's anything in the current batch that will be amendable for this.
I think you're right. Yeah, it's left. It's not stricken out here. There's, I mean, there's no changes even in that paragraph. But I was trying to see why that paragraph's even in here.
Well, is is there a sentiment to to make a new article to get out of the warrant for this effect? It'd be a very simple one, just changing the words. Six months, one year. I think we could, we could do that. There's sentiment I. And then have a hearing after the after the fact and if that needs to change it or withdraw it, we could.
Yeah, I'd I'd support that.
Others.
Well, it's simplified if we do, if we do have a two part meeting. Because the second, we'd be the second meeting and it'd take place later, so we'd have time to get a. Public hearing, which would be a pretty simple public hearing as well.
I haven't heard that we're going to be allowed to meetings.
Pretty compelling argument, though.
Uh, I hear that, but last I heard we were in for one monster meeting. Expenses involved with.
Yeah.
Over two days.
The additional concern I have is that the more changes we bring at this time. Uh, serves to further confuse and serve as ammunition for those obfuscators out there. Who are just going to use it, I'm afraid, against our best efforts.
I was, I I sort of agree to some to some degree. But I think in in a way, we're actually trying to slow down the the fear factor here. By saying we're amendable to more permanent residential units being constructed in this town. So I think that helps calm the fear factor quite a bit.
But is that fear factor held by a vocal minority or a silent majority? We don't know. We we can't answer that question. We don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
So should we take a vote on whether to put forward this article before the warrant closes? And then we could have a hearing and then we can choose a no vote on it at town meeting if we decide to or modify on the floor. Is that the way to resolve this tonight? Because this is our last meeting before the warrant closes.
Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I move we submit a new warrant. The worst we fail to get it done.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Peter moves seven seconds. Uh, I was gonna roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Robert.
Hi.
Harry.
Hey.
Tom. I, so three to one. I don't know if Jason will do it. If he won't, I'll I'll draft it. I think it's it's bone simple to just. Put in and strike out and bold, strike out six months and and bold one year in that paragraph. Done. Okay. Toby has his hand up. He has his hand up, but we're going to come to more public comment at the end. I think that's. Probably the best place to do that. So member items, I think we're on. Yes, number items. What do you got?
I have a question that maybe you all know, since we don't get together to talk that much. Um, there was a draft for discussion purposes sent around for the applications for special permit relief under the accessory dwelling unit. And it, I was curious what we were supposed to do with them.
That was something that Jason sent?
Yeah, and I didn't know if it was the answer to a question we received from somebody in the public about a piece of property that they were going to. Wanted to subdivide, but they would have inadequate frontage. Yeah, and I didn't know if this was part of the response to that or if this was something we were supposed to be weighing in on. But it is defined as a draft. I guess I shouldn't. Yeah, I was hoping maybe he had mentioned in passing, but we'll I we'll wait till he's back.
Yeah, if it's not urgent, we can wait for two weeks or maybe he can answer it offline, just informational. I I assumed it was just sort of informational, but maybe there was some action. Anything else? Here, Bob?
Um, I talked a little bit about in in the earlier comments I made about. The ADU there about just drilling down and trying to find out what the the real state requirements are. Are going to be for what they consider to be an acceptable sized dwelling unit. Um, so that that's that was the main item I had come up with. And I'm I'm beginning to work with the GIS department. And the assessor's office to sort of come up with some storytelling maps. To sort of help uh, help people understand this very complicated issue of. Lot size and density and all these things we're going to be contemplating over the next months. In terms of dealing with the MBTA. Uh, piece and overlay district and how we could, how we could comply with all of that potentially. And I I noticed the some of the assessor information is a little a little vague. I'm I'm hoping there's actually better information on the assessors cards as to the number of dwelling units. On an individual plot. Seems like really basic information, but I, as I look through the assessors cards of a couple dozen properties. Oftentimes, the rooms and the units per lot are left either with zeros. Or the rooms are filled out, but the number of dwelling units is not filled out. And so I was hoping to get a little bit better data.
It looks like we have good data on the area of the site.
Story.
We have square footage data that looks good, but the other stuff doesn't.
Yeah, the 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 amount of square footage, which is the tax taxable square footage and the taxable lot area are. Clearly on there, but the dwelling unit numbers are a little sketchy. But I think it will, it will show, for example, that we are, we actually. Seem to comply more closely with, for example, Gloucester's density in their their current zoning. More than our own zoning, where, you know, the the density in. Downtown area and in Bear Skin Neck is actually. Really up there. So and it also doesn't include parking and a lot of other things that you might normally see there. But the densities are nothing, they're they're so much higher than what we're proposing. Uh, what we're proposing in any of our articles that I I think people will see that we just have to visually. Show it a lot better. And so we're working on that. That that even includes the the residential residential R district. Surrounds the downtown there.
Our hope was to put together, and we played together with the GIS a little bit the other day. Um, a little bit with Diane and talking about some kind of a. Simple overview of what we're trying to do, both our goals, the strategies behind them, and then the specifics of each of the. Other warrant items to make it a little more understandable, which would be the first part of a. Public hearing or a workshop that we might have to get people a little more comfortable in the tools and the motives behind it.
Other member items, and Harry?
Nothing for me, thanks.
I have one update. The Town Green series of workshops. For Rockport on climate change impacts is shaping up. It's going to be three workshops. There'll be one about Long Beach, one about downtown. So Duck Square and Bear Skin Neck. And then the third one will be sort of a solutions workshops, breakout sessions. On the third, third day. That would break us for those two separate topics. And so the first one will be coming up. Uh, February twenty second at six thirty. And I think the principal speaker will be the professor from the Harvard School of Graduate Design. Who who did the study for all of Cape Ann and will tailor this one to to Long Beach. And we'll have some other folks, experts to chime in about some of the science and start a good conversation, I hope.
Do you have a date for the other two?
Uh, there were tentative dates, but we don't have the participants confirmed, so I'd rather not start announcing them. Uh, also, a another field trip. Unfortunately, the high tide closest to this next workshop is before the workshop. So that would be on February twentieth, President's Day. A Long Beach field trip. The ones at Good Harbor were interesting. It's not just, hey, look at the water, talking about the salt marsh and. And what what changes have happened over time. And I learned a lot about Good Harbor, like it actually used to be a harbor. There were two inlets where people could kind of anchor their boats and that's changed quite a bit with the land being filled in and. Marsh react, marsh reacting to it. So we'll, we'll learn some new things about Long Beach from whoever we can have participated in there. That's all I got.
Sounds good. Sounds interesting. Look forward to that. And I'm actually also percolating some thoughts for Earth Day, which is April 22nd, Saturday, April 22nd. I'm, I'm thinking about getting together all the various town in Cape sustainability minded folks for, for an event at, at the Wales Jock Cafe there to just invite people there for short presentations and conversations about what, what is going on locally and just have a little bit of a pollination session there where we can maybe do a little cross pollination and share, share some ideas and so forth. It's just in the early stages, but I want to, want to get everybody involved. So if anybody has any names of organizations that would like to be there besides the obvious Cape Ann Coalition, Climate Coalition and Town Green, and those folks, let me know.
We did an Earth Day thing, I think it was in 2019 at the Community House. Quite a number of disbanding organizations. They had some talks and some tabling. Hopefully can resurrect participants from that. It was organized by the Conservation Commission at that time.
Okay.
Let's see if there's any residual memory there.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, we may actually combine this with some sort of fundraiser for, for some, some cause. We have to think about what that will be, but any, any thoughts are appreciated.
Well, if it's raising funds, I think it needs to be on private property. I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, no, no, this would be just a non-town event, I guess.
We can help publicize it for Okay, let's go to public comments. Is Toby still interested? His hand is up now.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. As a procedural matter, I think your vote, you know, for a new article to go to a year for the Chicken Coop Apartments is the correct one. But after that, you were discussing the possibility of offering amendments. There's nothing to offer amendments to. The, the ADUs, the Chicken Coop Apartments passed at the Maytown meeting and they're not on the warrant coming up. So it's a new article or it's nothing. I am, you know, shocked and appalled by what Robert Simmons says about the assessors cards. All of your effort to nail the, the Chicken Coop Apartments so that they don't become Airbnbs is dependent on what's there at the assessors office. And if it's not even clear how many units there are on various pieces of property, how are you possibly going to determine which ones are legitimate now renting as Harry Corzlin said his neighbors were as Airbnb's as opposed to the ones that you've let loose with the restrictions, you know, preventing that. If there isn't even a record of what's out there, it will be obviously impossible to determine, you know, which ones are grandfathered as Airbnb's and which ones fall under the restrictions, which you put considerable effort into. And I must say, I resent Harry Corzlin's remarks about obfuscation. I'm flat out against what you've done, the Chicken Coop Apartments, the slum at the train station. Obfuscation is sowing confusion, which is not what I'm interested in. I'm simply against all of it and numbers of other people are as well. Thank you.
We're not doing the Groucho Marx song, wherever it is, I'm against it. Diane?
Diane Bella, 17 King Street. I just wanted to offer to both Peter and Robert our troupe of helpers, if you need that for when you do your public information center or workshop, whatever, whatever you decide to call it, because I think it's extraordinarily important that, that, that that happened. So please let, let us know. I'm tuning in on these. Let us know when you're going to be doing it and be glad to help.
All right. I see a physical hand up from Laura.
Very briefly, again, I'm thinking about how this all plays out at town meeting and what would help people in, in other towns. I have often found that the chairman presents a short explanation of any substantive changes and gives a little bit enough background. Again, I'm not talking more than a couple of minutes, just so that people kind of have a sense of what the article is meant to do. And clearly this doesn't affect, isn't affected if it's just changing punctuation and little corrections, but just a little more upfront to help the meeting focus on what your goals are in each article could be helpful.
So you saw what Jason did. He had like one slide on each article. You're saying that wasn't enough?
No, that wasn't enough. And also I, I think you realized that the maps were totally illegible and lacked the, the zones that were supposed to be signed. They've been cut off and things like that. So you really have some work to do in, in your audio visual presentation. You know, it's referring to zones one, two, three, ABC, and there's no legend on the map, at least on the town website.
There's so many zones on the GIS map. We almost need to put layers on and just look at the ones you're interested in.
I meant the, the black and white kind of map, not the, not the SRA and SRA and all that, not that map, but the
It's always going to be ugly and black and white, isn't it?
I don't, anyhow, just.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to improve that as much as we can. Yeah. It's, when you're talking about 4,600 plots of land to try to, to try to get it to be clear, but we're going to, we're going to work on that. And I think we, I think we have the data out there. It's just that the, and actually the GIS system shares a fair amount of data with the assessors office and it, it's interfaced with those maps, but we need to drill down and, and add, add some, add some interfaces perhaps that will help us study the problem a little bit more and make it, make it more clear what the, but frankly, not what we're proposing, but what the situation on the ground really is right now. And though what we're, what we're proposing and how, how it would change things, if at all, you know, in a, in a major way. I think that's the, the big thing to communicate here.
So taking the two meanings and making things clear, black and white.
Yeah.
I see no other commenters. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
He moves. Two seconds.
Seconds.
Two seconds. Roll call, Peter.
Hi.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Tom, hi. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mitch, for hosting and answering our questions. You're very helpful.
Have a good night.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks, all.